All right, welcome to another episode of Kiwis Kane Stories where neighbors meet neighbors. Today, we're doing a special on the candidates running for village council. We have with us today Fernando Vasquez. He is a Kiwis Kanan for 20 years and a professional civil engineer with 30 years of experience. So Fernando, welcome on the show. How are you doing today?
Doing great, Alex. Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me and thank you for this opportunity.
Oh, my pleasure.
Yeah.
But pre podcast, you were telling us a little about your experience. You want to tell me a little bit about your background?
Well, absolutely. Yes, professionally, I'll tell you a little bit, but personally, I was born in Boston. I was raised in Boston and also spent some time also in Argentina with my parents. My parents were from Argentinean descent, so I spent during my childhood and adolescence, I spent a little bit of time in Argentina and in Boston. I went to high school in Boston. I went to school up in Maine and came back to Florida where I began my life here in Florida. Going to Florida Institute of Technology back then, today is called Florida Tech. And that's where I studied engineering. So for the most part, my background, I graduated as an ocean engineer with a lot of experience in coastal engineering issues and was always drawn to the ocean. My father was, he liked to sail. He sailed around the world many times. And he brought that passion into me to, I guess, be near the water. And I enjoy very much. I don't think I lived anywhere else except in the coast. So I understand the coast very well. And on that, that's my private experience. And my professional experience also had the benefit of always working on large sized projects. I started my career in Boston, again, working on one of the largest infrastructure projects. It was done, it was called the Big Dig. If you've heard of it, I'm sure you have or other folks have. It was a project that was built in the 90s to reduce the traffic that was cutting through Boston by building a tunnel underneath the city. It was very complex. We're talking Boston as a city that was founded in the probably 1600s, if not earlier. And it was, you know, very complex, very historic. We were working in the lower part of the city and building a tunnel while we had a highway above us. So you can imagine that there was just a lot of utilities, a lot of, a lot of services that were buried below ground. And to maintain traffic while you're building that, it was just a very complex project. So I call that a baptism by fire. I enjoyed also, I also built other projects. I worked in Deer Island Project. I worked in Metro West, which was a tunnel that fed water to the entire city of Boston, carved about 300 feet below rock. And so I've always been involved in engineering, large engineering feats. Spent time in Argentina where I met my wife. I was working on larger projects there as well, large water privatization projects. And that's where I met my wife. We got married and we went back to Boston. She didn't particularly like it too much. It was certainly from being Latin American and entering into an environment like that, that is so cold. We decided to come back to Florida where the parents were and which was great. It was a great opportunity to be here and it was a return for me to back to this, to this great state. And I started, I became, at that point in time, I was offered the position for city engineer, assistant city engineer for the city of Fort Lauderdale. Or I worked extensively on projects related to drainage and flooding and impacts associated from, you know, the ocean and the bay and sea walls and very relevant stuff to what we're facing today. I think one of the biggest breaks I had was going Miami Beach, offered me a position as city engineer, but also director of transportation and director of environment. Where I was, my main duty was basically to lay out a capital plan to take care of all the flooding concerns that the city had. You can imagine this is a very vibrant hub here in South Florida. As everybody knows Miami Beach and its economic needs and how it is, you know, how it is set up. And all the respective impacts from all the other communities that come in in Miami Beach was threatened by sea level rise. It continues to be threatened. So as city engineer, I decided that it was time to prepare a large stormwater master plan that took into consideration all the existing infrastructure and the proposed infrastructure that needed to be developed to be able to handle that flood. But also we incorporated one component that was not included before anywhere in the state of Florida that I was aware of that time. We did do a little bit of research to find out it was the first plan ever to take into consideration sea level rise. When you do a stormwater, which is really not looking at the water that comes from above, but the water that's coming in straight from, from the top, from, excuse me, from the side and from the bottom, from the rising groundwater. So that really got my feet wet and got a lot of experience on that and lessons learned. Also, you can imagine that a project of that magnitude calls out for new infrastructure and new, you know, new pipes and pump stations and things that are important to include to get the water out. And those are costly items. So I remember we started closer to about 200 million and it ended up going escalating to 2 billion. By the time I was well into my position for infrastructure needs. So that was a significant undertaking that we had to do and a lot of collaboration with the public, being involved with residents. Never mind when we get got into construction, that was a whole different deal. But initially it was just making sure that we assess properly the areas that were being flooded and not. I was also director of transportation, which I've dealt extensively with various agencies, FDOT, the county and even local roads. And maintaining, you know, access through traffic, public access to schools, develop a walk to school program.
For Fort Lauderdale?
For Miami Beach. Well, Miami Beach, I mean, Fort Lauderdale too, I dealt extensively as well.
Okay.
For the most part, as a municipal engineer, you deal with all these things. You know, you deal both with, especially here in South Florida, where we had, where our main threat comes from tropical events, tropical floods or tropical winds. That is a key component, but also in the transportation because South Florida is a very, you know, it's a highly growing area. I was around since 2002 doing this. We saw a tremendous increase in population and in traffic, which also had to be mitigated, for lack of a better word. And had to work extensively with, you know, with federal, state and local agencies to ensure that we sustain that population growth. And you know, with that comes stormwater, water sewer, transportation and all those elements. One particular thing that I think it's worth noting and discussing was that also Miami Beach is an island that is kind of set aside for Miami. And it has three causeways that come in, you know, two real big causeways, the MacArthur Causeway and the Julia Tuttle. And then you have the Venetian, which cuts through homes, but they're all connected one way or another to the mainland. And there's always that give and take and those little scrimmages that we have with Miami and with the county in maintaining the proper flow of traffic, maintaining also safety and the causeways and ensuring that, you know, the livability and the economic, you know, resilience at Miami Beach had at that point in time was remain intact. There's a little thing here that I just wanted to point out to one thing that I was also involved.
What is that? Bring it close.
Yeah, it's actually, let me, let me pull it out. It's then this, after I followed with Miami Beach, I went to, I went to a large company called Jacobs, which I had initially worked in Boston and we were also part of the Port of Miami Tunnel. Which was a major, the Port of Miami Tunnel, yes, which was also a major impact to the, to the flow of traffic that was coming in to Miami Beach. So I had a role as a program management side in Jacobs and participating in the closeout of this project. And the inception of it, one second.
For those, for those that were just, are just listening to the podcast version, Fernando just pulled up one of his, was it a recognition and award?
It was a recognition, a recognition, participation in the Port of Miami Tunnel project. So that, you know, that was, maybe I just showed you the tail end of it, but the beginning of it didn't start that well. Cause I was, back then, this was that award we got when I was in the private sector with the company that designed the tunnel itself.
Okay.
That was, that was that award. My previous role went out before that. When the tunnel first started, when they started coming in and building it, I was the technical representative for Miami Beach dealing with FDOT, with, you know, with a contractor and all the issues that affected the city during construction. You can imagine that a lot of traffic always comes into Miami Beach, hundreds and, you know, 60,000, 50,000 vehicles are just coming in. And they're all want to go to the beach. It's constant. There is no peak of traffic going into Miami Beach. It's either in the morning, afternoon, you know, all the way through the night, people come in and out of the, of the causeway. So you can imagine how disruptive that project was and the concerns that the city had at that point in time related to its economy and, you know, the free flow of access of traffic. It's very important to, to a community and to, and to the economy of that community, especially Miami Beach, which, you know, when folks were starting to find out that there was a tunnel being built there and the traffic was being stalled, they decided, oh, let's not go to Miami Beach for dinner. Let's go to maybe Wynwood or let's go to Coconut Grove or let's go to Coral Gables. So, you know, that starts affecting the psychology of folks that really want to go out and want to maybe hang out at the beach. And they start looking for different areas and that eventually starts affecting your economic, creates an economic impact. And this was something that happened for three years straight on. So we had to work a lot in maintaining the flow of traffic, working alongside with a contractor, working the logistics. So traffic could flow as smoothly as possible. We really didn't have a seat at the table at that time and which was a bit frustrating. And that's one of the things that I think it's very important for Kiwis Kanas, because we do have a causeway that connects us straight into Miami. And that's one of the things that it's very important that we maintain through time is a seat at the table, a dialogue with the stakeholders that in this case being Miami FDOT that own these causeways. So we are not affected. And neither is the flow of traffic of our residents, that the causeway remains safe for our bicyclists. And that, you know, that we get what we need to get in order to provide access also to areas that are outside of our corporate jurisdiction, like, you know, Virginia Key, Mast Academy and all the beaches and amenities that are before the, the causeway. So I probably gave you a whole bunch of stuff, but the essence is that there is very solid experience that I've had accumulated through the years since I began my career as a young engineer, working on the Big Dig in Boston and working extensively on a major undertaking like the Port of Miami Tunnel as a technical representative for the city and then working for the engineer of record. So to me, that's a very important award because the Port of Miami Tunnel is essential and a lot of stuff that I've done in my career for the better of the community, right?
Of course.
So I hope I answered your question.
You did. You did answer.
Tell me if I get too talky.
No, not at all, man. Okay. So I, even though I think that we are beyond the icebreaker question, I still want to ask you the icebreaker question so that we can get to.
Ask away. We broke the iceberg, but we can keep on breaking it. It's pretty deep below.
Exactly. I still want to ask you, what is the best piece of advice you have ever been given?
Oh, I love that question, by the way. I think it's a fantastic question. Okay. So best of advice, best advice, I think advice is to provide really good advice. I think you also have to have a lot of wisdom collected through the years, right? Because you want to really be able to give sound advice based on experience. I think being the, the son of a sailor, if I were to put a word in my, and my dad spent a lot of time navigating through various difficult waters, you can, you can bring that into your day to day life. And I think one of the things that I always try to bring advice on, especially with younger professionals or younger people that are facing challenges in their lives or do careers is never give up. Never give up because just one of you think that there is something that may stop you. It's, it's really a lot of that. It's the work of your imagination. You know, it, there's a lot of it is written by fear and, and projections and your sense of capacity, whether you can actually meet the goals. And I always say, never give up. I've had a lot of challenges in my life, both professional and personal as well. And I think that the concept of just allowing things to happen and sometimes they're not pretty, but just keeping your eye on the ball and keeping your eye on, on your, on your goals. It's very important to do because for the most part, you can overcome. I know I have. So I certainly feel that the best piece of advice someone can give is never give up. If you have an ideal and if you have a goal in life, pursue it to the fullest and with passion, with hope, with faith and, and charge ahead.
So my next question for you is, what are the most important things for you in your life today?
Question. Thank you for asking. The most important thing is always family, in my opinion. I think it's important to recognize that family is what keeps us together, what gives us the sense of belonging and the sense that you have your group of people that love you unconditionally. And that to me is very important. My, my daughter and my son, 17 year old daughter, 32 year old son. They're, they're wonderful and very supportive. And my wife, beautiful wife, such very supportive to me through the campaign. And having that support, it's, it's, it's very important. So that is, that is critical for me. I'm a very family driven person. Also, the opportunity right now to bring forth all this experience to help my community is also a very important thing in my life. Because you may not know this or not, but I did, I was originally a consultant working for Kiwis Kane. And I decided that I would best serve my community, not by being a consultant, but by actually being a resident and looking in the best interest, especially with all the challenges that we have had. So I decided to move forward for my career and, and go and run for council. So it was a conscious decision to leave my job and come in and run for council. So, and I think I made the right decision because I'll tell you what, the day that I finally, my final day after giving my, my two week notice and saying, guys, I'm, you know, moving on. The next day I was kind of saying that I do the right thing, you know, like it's one of the craziest things I've done, you know? And this is June 3rd. So June 4th, I woke up and we had a major flood event. If you remember the flood event we had on June 4th.
I think it is.
And so to me it was like, okay, yeah, thank you for answering God, you know, we don't need to do that every day, but I get the hint. Certainly I felt I had made the right move and, and this isn't a very important component today for me is to, you know, continue to fight to really have everybody, you know, know who I am and know what I bring to the table. And hopefully, you know, maybe they give me the honor of serving them and be able to bring all this experience to help my community. Another thing which is not so relevant is to what we're talking about, which is something that's been always very center, front and center in my life is music. I was, I studied music, so I was very young. I've always been attracted to classical music. I studied classical piano. A little crazy too, but that over there is my first composition that I did when I was nine years old. And you want to see it?
Part of you wants to say, could you play it for?
I'm gonna play it right now, but maybe next time I will play it.
Okay.
Because I still have to read through the scribbles because I was so young when I wrote it. But I was nine years old. So I've always been attracted to music. I've always been attracted to the structure and form of music. And I guess that's what also made me kind of an engineer, which is, you know, I've always been interested in structure and form and, and something that, you know, you build and music is all about that. Music can be very mathematical, can be very logical, also brings emotion as well, but it's a key component for me in my life. So those are the really, the three big things that I always considered to be important, my family, my career and my music.
So tell us what inspired you to run for office?
I think the idea is, I mentioned, I was a consultant, working for, for ACOM. I was assigned by ACOM to be the project principal of this project, particularly because of my presence and, you know, the understanding I had of the community and they assigned me to be the, the project manager. And when I started delving deeper into the plans with all that experience that I indicated before that I had, both in Miami Beach and in Fort Lauderdale, I saw that there was a significant need for our infrastructure to improve. I mean, when you start looking deep into the patient, you start looking at the arteries and the veins and everything that gets, you know, that helped us get the water out. It was just not very adequate, to say the least. And a lot of things in the system that were not conducive for the water to evacuate on time. So, and another thing also was that our mechanical systems that helped push the water were also, there was just a lot of them and small and didn't really operate as I thought needed to operate. What I thought the village needed was a level of service, which is identify exactly what is it that, you know, how much water can we accept to live, you know, a sustainable life? To keep our economy the way it is, to keep our insurance rates low enough. And all those things, it's difficult to do as a consultant, because as a consultant, you just provide advice. And being a resident and seeing, you know, the, the village moving forward with this extensive program. I said, you know, and, and it, you know, I'm 60 years old and coming to a point right now that I'm looking at being able to transfer all this knowledge. Who am I going to give all this knowledge that I have to, right? I think it's better to put it to work for my, for my community, for my neighbors, for my friends. And I love this place and I remain to stay here until, you know, the end of my day. So I don't intend to go anywhere. And I felt that it was the right time to bring in all this experience and help my community. So that's what really inspired me to run. I had been putting up with the floods a lot. Never really felt that it was, you know, something that I, at that point, that I would go out and invite them to council. But now seeing everything and how it was, I felt that it was a very important need for me to be there.
So I have a two-part question now. What are, what are the most important issues that you see the Kiwis Kanas facing? And how would you try to solve them or tackle these issues?
Yeah, it's a great question, by the way. Well, mainly is our infrastructure. Right now, the way it is, is inadequate for us to go and create a sustainable community. We have to handle the pipes and pumps and everything that is below ground to make sure that the flood, that we get rid of these, these waters. Otherwise, our property insurance, will it be affected? And, you know, there's also the looming impact of sea level rise. That is something that obviously it's a discussion that is happening countywide. And I'm certainly taking that into consideration, but what I'm taking more into consideration right now is the short term impacts to our insurance rates and how we're perceived through the respective agencies that maintain our bonding capacity properly. You know, it's important that we do do that. A lot of people here flood extensively and there's a lot of different low points. The water just finds its way down and, and there's residents and I recently, two days ago, I had my meeting breed and I've met with most of the residents that I've met with is Fernando, help us out, you know, we just don't know what to do. We're just getting all this water that's coming in from everywhere and my property gets flooded. And, you know, what can we do? And they need to have a voice and we need to ensure that they're, that they're dry and that they're also have passable ways through the roadways and that we discharge that water. So, you know, they can have an acceptable, a normal living style like we all do, right? There's a lot of people that don't get affected, but there's a lot of people that really do get affected. So we have a balance that we need to achieve in our, in the way we manage the water that is coming in both from the sky, from the ground, from the sea. Everybody talks about sea level rise and again, I understand that. And that's still a matter of, continues to be a matter of debate above me and above all of us. But in the meantime, we just cannot continue to live in the conditions that we live with the flooding that we have and allowing the residents to be affected as they are. So that's a critical component. Also think that we have a great vision moving forward. A lot of people, residents have gotten together and they enhance the original vision plan now into a vision 2040 that takes into consideration, you know, access to the village, you know, the commerce that we also have to take care of. And, you know, ways of enhancing our economy, the ways of our roadways to remain passable and how we, how we maneuver through traffic, multimodal issues, the school and things like that, that we all have to kind of breathe life to. And now it's the best time. So I hope I answer your question with that.
Yeah. So tell me, what are the top three things you will do when you take office?
Address the flooding issue, number one. I want to see, I want to see activity happening during the, during my, you know, during the four years that I'm there. I want, I want to make sure that I see activity happening within the two years that I take office. I commit to really work very hard with the administration to ensure that we take care of priority areas and also take care, right now they're moving forward with a, with a school project and trying to help drain that because the kids are getting all, you know, flooded. So that's one project that I really want to see come to fruition and, and get done. I also want to be involved directly into issues related to the causeway. Have a dialogue with the county, have a dialogue with the city of Miami and have our say. I think staff has done a great job developing a master plan or an ideal plan that benefits Kiwis Kane. We need to make sure that we are heard, that we see action happening in that direction because it's very important. We're stakeholders of that causeway, whether it's owned by Miami or not. It has a beginning and it has an end. It ends in Kiwis Kane. So we have to make sure that from beginning to end, it does not affect our residents coming in and out and that it's safe, accessible and that we are able to share that with other modes of transportation. And the next thing I want to, the next thing I really want to focus on is in offsetting some of these big costs of infrastructure. I mean, people, when you think about it, everybody wants to move forward with stormwater, but when you are doing construction to that magnitude and you're ripping the streets out and you are, you know, you're, you're breaking streets, you're trying to move traffic, you're dealing with a contractor that's finding stuff as they are underground, getting all those, you know, all that dirt out, storing it. It's, it's very, very disruptive. So I want hands-on, I'm going to be challenging the administration to really develop a hands-on approach to ensure minimal impacts to our residents and the continuance of traffic and the continuance of our, you know, of our lifestyle while we are building our community. So those, and you know, there's more than three, because I also believe that we have to improve our commerce. We are a self-sufficient island and that's great. I mean, we have our own Dixie. We have, you know, we have our CBS, we have our other areas, restaurants all over the place. We have shops and they suffer sometimes because we need, you know, I, the foot traffic, somehow we need to think it out better. And they have done that. The new plan looks at how we can improve foot traffic. Because we want to ensure that our businesses thrive and that's part, that's all part of our infrastructure. That's all part of how we move the traffic, how we move foot traffic and how we incite residents to be in our, you know, commerce centers and not only just enjoy a great lunch or a great dinner, but also shop. And that I really want to do. I also want to incentivize programs of, you know, being a. I also want to incentivize programs of, you know, being a musician, a classical musician myself, I want to incentivize programs for children to be more involved in music, to have that venue, to have that space to develop into other areas. Sports are great. And there's a lot of kids that are very good at sport, but there's other kids that are also good at music. And so we need to create that venue for them and 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 help that. Parent children programs, I think are critical in the village to have opportunities for parents and their children to, you know, enjoy time together. Do activities together. So I'd love to see that. Well, so many thoughts, so many things, but I think I gave you kind of a, an idea where where I want to move forward with.
So this is a volunteer based position. So how much time do you plan to dedicate to the position of a village council?
Whatever is necessary. I was at for short question.
That's a long time.
It is, but it's a commitment, but it's a commitment.
I like it, I like it.
And because it is a commitment, because I'm going on, you know, full steam ahead, I'm aware of of how demanding the position can be. You know, when you think about our size, you would wonder and you say, what shouldn't be because we're really just kind of a small town and all that. But but it but it's a lot of work to keep our, you know, we're the last bastion of a small town USA. I always say that when you look throughout South Florida, I don't think you find the uniqueness that Keeviscane has. And it's, we have folks outside that inadvertently or deliberately, who knows, are causing impacts to our way of life. And we have to be sure that we maintain that. And that's, that's really one, if you ask me what is my key, you know, determination running for council is to make sure that we retain this and we maintain the integrity in our culture here at Keeviscane as a small town USA village. We have our own Fourth of July parade. The kids have their own activities and they hang out in the island and we like that. We have, it's a great place to to have a family, to grow a family. We have churches, we have, you know, we have everything to create a, you know, a community, a sense of community and to protect that. And I want to make sure that I that I steward that along the way.
So we talked about some of the issues that you think that we're facing and that we should tackle. But what are some of the things the village is doing well?
Yeah, I mean, they're doing a lot of great things. Well, I think first of all, we have a great administrator, Steve Williamson, he's our village manager. I've known Steve from back when I, you know, he was a public official in Miami. Although we didn't exactly work during the same times that we've known each other as professionals. Steve is a mission driven village, you know, manager, which is difficult to find sometimes. Sometimes you just end up with these administrators that all they do is just push paper around. Well, Steve is not that type of a professional. He's looking in the future. He's looking for our best interest. And that's why I really think we're doing a great job by having him, you know, our our public works director, Jake Osman's great guy, you know, Roland Samimi is also looking at all whole aspects of resiliency, Jeremy, looking at the plans. I think we have a great staff. And I think we need to be very conscious about that. Because stuff, staff that is competent and that has a vision is very tough to find. And I tell you, because I came from that end, dealing with bureaucrats and dealing with administrators. So we're very fortunate and I think we need to preserve that. And I think we need to be very thankful that we have those folks looking for us in the best interest. I think another thing that is going great is that we are planning for the future. We understand we need to invest. And we have done, we have taken the proper steps and the proper measures to do that. I know it's a little bit of a contentious item, this issue about raising the the bond debt, the cap. That particular ceiling that you have, that we have right now on our debt cap was something that was inscribed, written in the charter forever. It was there that we shall not raise it above one percent. And then, but now we're looking at two percent. Just given us that amplitude that we need, understanding that we're investing and we're going to be prepared to invest in the future. I think it's a wise idea. I think it's important to put it in the charter and make sure to give the council the opportunity to discuss that and as a matter of policy. But having the residents accept that first is critical. That doesn't mean we're going to go out there and next day go out and borrow money. But it does position us and it does send a message to Wall Street to say, hey, Keeviscane is about to invest some serious infrastructure. That's a clear message to investors. And I think we need to be aware of that. I know a lot of people are saying, no, we're going to go out and borrow money. We already have money. Yes, we do. We do, but it's not all for stormwater. A lot of it has to do with the underground and with the electrical, a lot has to do with other projects that we intended to build on. So make no mistake, I mean, we we're going to be spending some money here. And so we have to be cautious in how we do it, but we also have to ensure that the investors out there are aware. And there's nothing safer, especially during inflation times and municipal bonds. A lot of people, you know, revert to that, especially when they're getting more conservative about their money. So it's a great opportunity for us to be positioned for 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 investments in Keeviscane. That's not to say, and I want to talk a little bit about this, about the financing component, because there's another angle to this that people have not talked a lot about. About a year and a half ago or so, the president, President Biden and his administration, they passed the Infrastructure Investment Act, which was about one point three trillion dollars, which were to be dedicated to roadways, water, to resiliency. And we need to capitalize on that. We need to be, we need to do a good job at going out there and going out for those grants and bringing in that money into Keeviscane because we are a community that is, when you look at it, we are always under threat of hurricane or other impacts that may affect us and we are underserved that perspective. So there's all this potential money that we, that could help us offset, you know, the expenditures that we have to do as a village and 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 balance out our expenditures while we while we built. It's an unprecedented amount of money that I've never seen ever before for infrastructure. So we need to do our part on that. And we need to ensure that that we act intelligently on that to offset some of those costs and some of those worries too, that the community may have. And and I think that's another thing too, that I think the administration is doing a great job at and looking into that.
So being in an elected office, you know, there's going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation. How do you plan to work with those that oppose your ideas?
I think it's important, first of all, dialogue is clear dialogue and respect is is our key components in trying to reach consensus. You don't always reach consensus. But, you know, hearing the idea of others and either, you know, working with those ideas to improve the the argument, improve the narrative that we're talking about. I think that's a key component to work together where there's, you know, there's not me and team, right? Or an I and teams. Certainly, it takes, it takes a village to work together. And nobody, not one person has the entire solution of everything. So a collaborative approach with the rest of the council. A, you know, and and hearing each other and understanding where we're coming from. Everybody wants the best for the village. Everybody that's going to be sitting there is going to want the best. But they may have a different point of view on how to get there. So I think it's a little bit of give and take in reaching consensus. Not always, you're not always going to get yes votes, you may get a no vote, you may a couple of no votes. Item may not pass. But that just means that something needs just a little bit more of work, not everything is decided in one, one day, you know. And I think that reaching consensus is critical. And hearing our fellow council members who are also represent the public is is an important component and is part of the diligence of reaching a consensus or having an item pass.
If elected and you finish your terms, your four years, how would you like to be remembered?
To brought tangible solutions to the village, that the village is better off. The the experience that are brought in and hopefully the work that we've done together in the council. I want to be remembered for having done something tangible and not just have talked about it. That's why I'm very focused on the first two years. I think the first two years are critical. We have to get stuff done. We can talk about it all we want, but if we don't start, you know, moving dirt and getting these systems in place and actually preparing ourselves for future economic growth and improvement of our of our way of life. I don't think, you know, I that's not something I don't want to be remembered for. I certainly want to be remembered for having done something tangible and beneficial to my community.
What do you think makes you stand out amongst other candidates?
I think my experience, my direct experience working with issues of this magnitude and this complexity and bringing all these different items into, you know, these different components, infrastructure, you know, transportation, environment, economics. I think I can bring solid experience in that. I think I know, I know I bring that solid experience. I I hope that can be seen as valuable to our community and for the work that lays ahead.
So now onto onto a lighter set of questions in terms of like, you know, your more personal approach. So working in government is very stressful, right? So what are some of the things you do to de-stress after a long day?
I play the piano. No, what do I do? I truly, I mean, I think music to me is very zenish. I certainly, I I think everybody should have, you know, something to do outside your day job. And to me, that's, that's very, that's very soothing and takes away a lot of the stress. I also like to exercise, walk the beach. I love to fish. I do a lot of coastal fishing and just and I also, you know, go out with my family in the boat. And so those are, those are things that I like to do. Just enjoy what we have, enjoy the the gifts that are given here in the community that we live in, natural gifts like our bay and the beautiful weather that we have. And also internally, my my own, my own interest and love for music.
When you have a last minute guest, what is your go to meal?
Empanadas.
Handmade?
That doesn't sound too much last minute.
That's true, that's true.
But there's a great empanada shop right around the corner from here that I, that I love to go to. And that's definitely, let's go get the empanadas because, you know, the in-laws are coming. So do that and, you know, that's, that's what I love about the key that, you know, you can go from bananas to, you know, Hindu food or you can grid chain. Now we got a new Chinese restaurant, which is fantastic and can't wait to try it out. I love Chinese food. We have sushi. You know, you can just any, anything within, within five, 10 minutes, you'll get, you'll get a, you'll get your quick, you know, quick turnaround.
Yeah.
To help your residents.
That's true, that's true. So I got, I got two last questions. I know that we are running out of time, but we got, what do you, what do you love most about the key?
It's natural beauty. It's a privileged area. And I think we, sometimes we lose sight of that. Like I said before, I don't think, I I don't know of any other place in the area that is, that has the adequate density, the self sufficiency, the natural beauty. It's just a privileged area to live in. And I just love Keeviscane. I don't think I would want to go anywhere else. Just love the beach. I love walking the beach. I love our lighthouse. I love walking around Brandon Park. And just, just enjoying the natural beauty that is afforded to us.
Can you describe for us a perfect weekend for you here in the key?
It's about to happen. Going out on my boat, enjoying, you know, riding around the bay, which I love. And I'm also very concerned, want to make sure that we keep that bay clean, by the way. Love to fish and, you know, come back here and enjoy my my family, get to, get to do my music. And also, you know, I love the sunsets. I love the sunrises right here. I live right in the beach. So I get to see them. I get to see them every morning, almost every morning when I'm not sleeping. But, you know, it's just, it's just a fabulous, fabulous place that you just have so many activities. And I love a farmer's market. I go hang out at the farmer's market. I love the dog park. I got two dogs. And I'm surprised it's been this quiet this long. They usually bargain everything that moves. But I love taking them to the dog park, talking to residents, talking to fellow friends that are there and it's just, it's just a great place to live. I think we're really, we really need to begin counting our blessings because there are plenty.
Fernando, thank you for jumping on the show, telling us all about you and your, your, your reasons why you're running for office and things that you plan to do. So thank you for taking your time again and good luck.
Thank you very much. It's great, great talking with you and and thank you for this great opportunity. And just want to tell something to everybody out there. Don't forget November, vote for Fernando Vasquez for village council. I want to make a difference for our community and I want to do that, you know, with with all my heart. This is a work of love and I look forward to you about, thanks.